All right, calling to order the city regular city commission meeting of January seventeenth. We are all online as of today due to the weather and extreme conditions. And we're convening the meeting and before we do it, just want to say on behalf of the commission, thank you, public work staff, your guys are out there doing the thing. I just saw another little video of a bulldozer sliding some ice down the hill and it just slid all the way down to the drain. So, thank you. Let's have roll call.
Commissioner Rocky Smith. He's muted.
I was on mute. I'm here.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. Just let it be known that we will be having an executive session after the conclusion of the regular commission meeting. We don't have a flag, although I have one in the other room. So would would you care to skip the flag salute?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're skipping the flag salute. Tonight on our agenda, we will be postponing the oath of office oath of office for our new police officer. We're going to save that postpone that till February. So Matthew Pavey, thank you so much for for agreeing to delay this. But we have a proclamation on the agenda tonight, school board appreciation month. And this was forwarded to me by the Oregon City School Board. So whereas school board members are elected to sit and trust in their diverse communities and in that capacity, they are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for public education of their students. And whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds and other areas of school district that the community has put their trust, put in their trust and or as school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear and shared vision of public education for their schools that sets a high standard for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas school board members adopt policies that give voice to that leadership, employ superintendent that administers board policy and also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with policies. And whereas board members are elected to school board, school board positions deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of volunteer service to public education and to the students of our state. And now therefore, the city commission of the city of Oregon City does hereby proclaim January 2024 a school board appreciation month. And further, we declare our appreciation for the members of the Oregon City School Board and we ask all citizens to join us in recognizing their dedication and hard work to create an educational system that meets the needs of both today, today's and tomorrow's students. And I will sign this when I see Jacob sometime after the seventeenth of January. So on our agenda tonight, we have on the regular agenda item. So do we have any citizen, anybody on the citizen's side that wants to say anything this evening in on the zoom call? But we did receive some correspondence, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Wiley?
Yes, but it relates to items on the agenda. We don't have anybody registered for public comment tonight.
Okay, perfect. So we'll move on to item five and our presentation from the homeless solutions coalitions of Clackamas County has been postponed until our regular meeting on February the seventeenth again due to weather constraints. So I'd like to move to item number six and seven.
I'm sorry, mayor, just want to just want to clarify, February seventh will be the next meeting, not the seventeenth, just just so.
Did I say the seventeenth? Okay, sorry, I meant the seventh.
Heard. So it'll be February seventh, our next commission meeting.
Yes, next regular commission meeting on February seventh, twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
All right. So item number seven is the consent agenda. And do we have any items that anybody wants to pull or do we have a motion to approve? I had a question, but I was answered by the chief. And the only question I have about it is I have one question about seven B. I don't want to pull it, but I have a question.
I wouldn't mind hearing you elaborate on that. I was curious about it myself. That's that's the seven eleven store itself.
Seven D or seven B?
D as in David.
Yes, seven D was my question to the city manager and the chief was concerning the applicant. So sometimes the applications are not always filled out as thoroughly as maybe they could be. And I had a question when I looked at the whole thing. I didn't wasn't really sure because it was only a person with one name. So I wanted to know who the DBA was and they chief got back to me on the DBA is a actually a person with a first name and a last name. So it's pinkly changing the ownership for the seven eleven that's down the street there. Is that correct, chief?
Good evening. Yeah, that's correct.
So so this just goes with the ongoing sale of beer only? Is that it?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they yeah, they do sell wine.
Wine, yeah.
Then wine.
Spirits, yeah. And we don't put, we try to hold out personal information. So that's why. But we did have the full completed application that we did a background check on.
And then my question on seven B, I just wondering if you could explain a little, I read this report just a little bit more about exactly what it is that they're doing in the street. I didn't quite understand the the process, whatever it is that we're that they're doing.
Yeah, my my understanding, if I've got this correct, is that they're doing a water connection for their fire supply line or fire line. There's a domestic line and then a fire line and they've got to make a tap to this to the main out in the street in middle of Malala. So we're trying to get that work scheduled for them. I think if I remember right, there's a specific number of days that they, you know, are going to do various elements of that soft cutting, digging, connecting, backfilling and paving. So that's that's the work that needs to happen whenever we have it in these sections of Malala, especially where the medians are at, where it's difficult to move traffic far enough out of the way or move the work far enough to the edge. We need, we either need to do it in the middle of the day and upset a lot of traffic or we need to do it at night. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yeah, I was looking at a just a GIS map to try to figure out how many residential properties were adjacent there so that I could ascertain how much of an issue this is or not.
Well, I can look real quick, but I yeah, I'd have to look. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, just I guess I would just say this, the same thing applies that we've had that we've done in the past is that, you know, we want to make sure that they're putting notices out to let the residential properties or any of the properties know that this is going on because sometimes, I mean, it's getting towards tax season. So there may be businesses, people are working late to to deal with, you know, their employment. And I know that can be very noisy. So that's that was my only concern.
We we will follow the notification process that we've been doing. We we've also tried to limit that as much as as much as is practical, just like we've heard from the commission in the past. So we 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 understand the concerns and we try, we've been trying to address those.
Great. Anybody else have any other questions about the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and roll call.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Hi.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Hi.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Hi.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Hi.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right.
Mayor McGriff.
Yes, sir.
Before we go on, I has nothing to do with the item. So I didn't bring it up while we were talking about the items, but I did find it kind of interesting when I was looking at the street design standards. Local streets, which is our lowest classification, lowest amount of traffic it can handle. We specify that we want a minimum of ten foot wide lanes. Anybody care to guess at the two narrow spots, what the width of the lanes are on the arch bridge? Where all that diversion from the nasty T word is going to go? Anybody got a guess? And John, you don't you don't get to guess, John.
Can I play?
Not gonna go, not gonna go is going.
Exactly. Eight feet, seven inches.
Yeah.
Okay, that means all y'all with those big wide trucks stay off the bridge.
Exactly. Yeah, anyway, I just found that interesting.
Well, you didn't want to bring back the street design standards or?
Well, the question is, Mr. Lewis, the the road going over the arch bridge, I don't think it's classified as a local street.
No, it is not. Also doesn't meet today's design standard. So I think if it were built today, it would be to it would be wider than that. Surprise, surprise.
Oh, it would be, it would be thinner than that and be a bike ped bridge.
Oh. Oh. Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna just let the arch bridge stay in its national register status and not try to do anything about changing the width of the lanes or anything of that sort. Because if you look at the other bridge that's designed by Mr. McCullough, it's got wide lanes and the sidewalk is barely wide enough to, you know, a person and their dog to get through there. So we got, we got a little bit of everything on 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 both sides of our city. All right. Anything else on that item that Mr. Mitchell brought up? Appreciate it, Michael. All right. So we have item number eight. We have a public hearing tonight. It's the first reading of ordinance number twenty three, ten, ten. And it's adopting the Oregon City Loop Trail Refinement Plan. Boy, that's a long title into the Oregon City Transportation System Plan, an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to read the file number. Who's who's on deck for this?
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna have, we invite Christina Robertson Gardner, our senior planner, to provide the presentation.
Thank you, Tony. Mayor McGriff, city commissioners, tonight is a public hearing for legislative file. Our public works department has been working on refinements to a previously adopted loop trail and the mechanism to adopt that is to adopt it into the transportation system plan, which is an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan. I have about four or five process slides for you and then I'm going to hand it off to Josh Wheeler, our assistant city engineer. We'll provide a little more detail about the plan.
Jacob, as much as you can get us out of the the screen, that'd be great.
All right. So as I mentioned, this is the comprehensive plan amendment process. It's a legislative process. This means it's a type four process. This project went to the planning commission on December eleventh and they were presented with the background of the document and provided through the public hearings process. They recommended approval to the city commission. Tonight, we're proposing the first reading of the ordinance and city commission adopts the first reading. There'll be a second reading at the next city commission meeting. Of course, as a legislative process, the just number of hearings is at the discretion of each hearing body. For legislative files, disclosures of ex parte conversations are not required, though any disclosure of a conflict of interest is required. So after the presentation, if there is, you believe you have a conflict of interest, please declare that as we are in the hearings process. And finally, a public comment. There has been a couple of public comments received which has been added to your city commission packet. Public comments that were part of the planning process have been integrated into the final report. And I know Josh Wheeler, assistant city engineer, is available for to respond to any of those comments and be able to answer any questions you may have. So in brief, what is this proposal? The Oregon City Loop Trail Refinement Plan analyzes the existing conditions on site for the outstanding segments of the loop trail that has not been planned and provides a document that looks at future development funding and the needs for those segments. And as I mentioned before, this loop trail will be added to the transportation system plan, which is an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan. And so the file number above is glue a twenty three thirty three legislative file twenty three oh two. And why is this coming to the city commission? Well, in general, local government should plan public services in accordance with the community's needs as a whole, rather than being forced to respond to an individual development such as a budding land use application. And these are the last remaining segments and then two adjoining segments. So those were brought in. So there's four segments in total, two that are actually in the loop trail and two that directly abut it. And most importantly, for the the planning staff, as we move forward with this application, what does this adoption provide? One, after this is adopted, staff can require dedication or development with any associated land use applications that may be abutting any of these trail segments. And this level of detail is really necessary to apply for competitive grants to build one or more of the segments in the future. So this is really that step needed to apply for grants in the future by our public works department. The criteria for approval for a legislative file is set out in chapter seventeen sixty eight, as well as our newly adopted Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. In general, staff look through the approval criteria and kind of on the screen, I provided a couple bullets that look at really the findings for approval for this. Providing safe connections between neighborhoods, commercial centers and community amenities help encourage residents to walk or bike for shorter trips. So even though this is a loop trail, providing better access within your neighborhood helps you make that trip on that Saturday or after dinner. You don't have to get in your car. Helps reduce the number of vehicle files, vehicle miles traveled and decreases the overall dependence of vehicles as the only feasible mode of transportation. Not only the larger loop trail, which may be more recreation oriented. Once again, these small segments are really for your inter neighborhood travel. And the loop trail segments are located in the city's southern section, which within the existing residential areas developed in the seventies and in the two thousands. And these areas have traditionally received less attention for pedestrian and bike improvement. So there's a lot of parity for looking at this area of the city as it relates to future capital improvement projects. And staff found that the application met all the criteria to help implement the Oregon City twenty forty policies. So your options this evening, after you hear the presentation and and ask questions to staff is to approve the first reading of the ordinance or to continue the first reading of the ordinance to the February seventh meeting and provide additional direction or questions for staff. So I'm available for any questions the city commission may have and I can also, if not, I will ask Josh Wheeler to make a quick overview of the loop trail plan.
Go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
Let me stop sharing one second.
Jacob, looks I need access, please.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, so the presentation that you're seeing tonight is a an abbreviated version of one that you saw back last summer. So again, the Oregon City Loop Trail, it's a trail that's identified in the city's Trails Master Plan. That trails master plan was developed back in two thousand and three. It's also takes care of four different path sections that are in the TSP, which was created back in last created or last updated back in two thousand and thirteen with some funding updates in eighteen and some additional planning is expected to happen in two thousand and twenty five and twenty six. This project begins the refinement process of those four segments that Christina outlined. And by having this plan, it positions the city in a way to be able to apply for grant funding and condition development if it were to occur. This is a picture of the plan. We've got S twenty three and S thirty. They're the ones in the orange and the purple on the outskirts and they are part of the official loop part of the plan. The green and the yellow, which is S twenty two and S twenty four. Those are segments that get people from the loop trail into the shopping centers, the neighborhoods, as well as the school there. So it's a natural connection to all of those and we saw those as ones that would help also define this. How we went about this whole process is we looked at opportunities constraints. We used a consultant that looked at what type of plans had existed previously. What is the surrounding land use? What type of right of way would be needed, if any? What is the existing infrastructure? How do utilities get impacted specifically electric, overhead electric? And then are there environmental constraints such as the natural resource overlay district or the geologic hazards overlay district? We did a lot of community outreach. And that started with an online survey back in twenty twenty two. And in that survey, we had sixty eight respondents. The majority of those were in the Gaffney, the Caulfield and the Hillendale neighborhood. We also did outreach to stakeholders and that included PGE, the school district, shopping centers, the Parks Department, the Public Works Department, Clackamas Community College, the Gaffney, Hillendale and Hills Grove, Westing Farm neighborhoods, Metro and the Settlers Point Homeowner Association. We held a public workshop at the Gaffney Lane Elementary for those two sections that are offshoots of the trail. We had twenty four attendees there. Throughout most of those online comments and in person comments, a lot of the concerns dealt with unhoused people and if they would be desiring to use the trail in a way that may not be as desirous for those that neighbor the trail. And then some concerns of just, you know, more of the specifics, would there be fencing? Would there be landscaping? Would there be dog bag stations, that sort of thing? We then went before the city commission and a work session to do a much more broad overview of the plan in June thirteenth of twenty twenty three. We heard a few things. What we heard mostly there was some concern about the Claremont section and the proximity to the electric lines. The way we've addressed that is to try and keep that from under the lines as much as possible and having it adjacent to Claremont as much as possible to get it away from the lines as much as was feasible. And then we also heard comments about the potential unattractiveness of the part going through the shopping centers. And we've had additional conversations with some people at the shopping center and and ultimately we have the short term, which just allows people to use the bike lanes that already exist on Malala and Beaver Creek to go around that area. Long term would probably be, you know, one of the last parts of this trail put together and we would work with everyone to see if that is really feasible, reasonable to go through a parking lot or if probably talking more to the pedestrian and bicycling community, is it just better just to stay on the road? So we do have both options there. We made it to planning commission at the end of the year last year and they gave a recommendation of approval. They had a number of questions which we addressed at the meeting and they seemed satisfied with those various answers. Some was talking about process. Someone was talking about just when it would get built and, you know, how this sets us up for potential grant funding. And then lastly, because we knew we had done some general outreach, some targeted outreach, we had done public meetings, we had done a CIC meeting as well before that December eleventh meeting that was on no, in November of twenty twenty three. We still felt like we wanted to give one more targeted outreach before this meeting. And we did a letter to anyone that was directly adjacent to the proposed path locations. We received six comments and we responded to all of those. Again, most of those dealt with the same comments we had heard at the other workshops and meetings that we had had. And then lastly, just today, you received an email and that same person gave a very similar comment, I want to say about a month ago or so. I forget exactly when it came in. I've spoken to that citizen since that time and tried to ask what else he was looking for because he was speaking of a lack of safety at the intersections of Malala and Claremont as well as two thirteen and Myers. And he said he appreciated, one, he appreciated the plan. And he appreciated the fact that we do have crosswalks and pedestrian signals and and everything that does exist in our in our toolbag, but was hoping that something else could even happen just because going across he as a biker himself did not feel safe. And when I asked, you know, what would that be? He said, you know, something like, and I proposed to him something like an overpass or something, one of those sorts of things was just something that we talked about casually. But that's what his comments meant when he was asking about or stating that those intersections were unsafe. He understood that we had done pretty much everything that's in the toolbag, but he would be in favor of something even more out of that bag. And besides that, the final comments are, we would expect the Claremont and the Myers sections to be constructed in phases because they are fairly expensive. You'll see the cost to the side. The Claremont section somewhere between the five point four and eight point two million, the Myers in that same five to seven million range. I know the Myers would be a really good one because it would help address the Lynn Leland Myers plan that was created a few years ago and help implement more sidewalks and bike paths on Myers. The Claremont section would probably also be fairly beneficial because it it gets people from Myers over to Malala. But we see that probably being done in sections. But those are the ones we'd probably target. And then the Urgent Grove area probably be done by private development because it goes through a vacant piece of property there. So I am available as well as Christina for any questions and I will stop sharing.
Are there any questions? I had to go back and refresh because as you said, we did this last summer and it wasn't right on my my radar. But I I know that, thank you for addressing some of the concerns that I have about the one on Claremont. I have very strong feelings about any paths or being underneath those power lines. I don't think it's safe. John, if you could help me out, we had a conversation with our youth advisory commission about Myers Road. And there was concerns of one of the students who lives over that way brought up concerns about safety. And at least on the park, it's going to the high school. And I don't know how if this is going to help with any of that, but at least it was out there. The other thing I I guess I was concerned about too is that did any of this get taken to the Caulfield Neighborhood Association? I'm assuming part of Myers is in Caulfield. And then we don't have active, an active neighborhood association in the Gaffney Lane area anymore. And Outwear Orchard is, I don't, I think that's south end. So again, we've got really no representatives on the CIC from those areas and that. But I do appreciate the fact that you did do a targeted mailing. I would say I am disappointed, you know, I realize it's citizen involvement, but the first thing you go to is that, you know, are homeless people going to be camping there? It was like, okay. I understand, but it was just disappointing. So when you're talking about moving it over on close to Claremont, are you talking about having it more aligned with if there was a sidewalk there? Because I know it's on one side of Claremont, but not on the, I'm thinking on the Joanne side. There's not really a sidewalk through there as I recall.
You are correct. And instead of having a sidewalk in that area, we would I can't recall if there's a bike lane there. I think there is at this time. We would probably shrink the bike lane and put the bikes and the pads on a multi-use path there, which allows everything to move over as much as humanly possible to be away from the lines as as much as physically able.
Any other comments?
Well, you you raised a question about the youth advisory commission. Yes. They were, I think the the concerned areas that they had were along the high school. So really between High School Lane and Beaver Creek Road is where they were talking about. I think there were some other comments about the unimproved section of Myers Road, which is oh, Frontier Parkway area to really Warner Parrot and Warner Millie and, you know, that much of that area is without sidewalks. So I think those are the two areas that they were referring to.
Referring to.
So and and this this project isn't, it crosses Myers Road and yet obviously there's a long section of Myers Road, but it's in a different.
Different part.
Yeah.
All right. Well, seeing no further questions, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item and make sure that those comments that we received are also entered into the record. I would also ask for the record, are there any conflicts of interest by any commissioner regarding this project? And we'll just just go down the line. So Adam?
No.
No.
Rocky?
No.
Frank?
Not that I know of.
Okay, and Mike?
No, none.
And I have none either. So that takes care of that legal requirement. Uh, we don't have anybody online uh who wants to make comments on this at this public hearing, I'm assuming.
No, no one registered.
Okay, then um let's close the public hearing and we'll deliberate. Any further questions or do we have a motion to do the first reading after our attorney reads the information? So we have a motion?
I'll move to approve first reading ordinance twenty-four dash one zero zero one.
There a second? I'll second it. Ms. Richter?
Ordinance number twenty-three dash one zero one zero, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City. Amending the Oregon City Transportation System Plan by adopting the Oregon City Loop Trail Refinement Plan.
Oh, roll call, please.
Uh, before we do the roll call, I just wanted to confirm that uh Commissioner Smith's motion was for twenty-three. Um, twenty-three ten ten and not twenty-four. I believe one zero zero one is what he stated.
I heard twenty-three ten ten, but that was just me. Is that correct? Commissioner Smith?
Um, I don't know what I said, but I am referring to the ordinance for the loop trail.
Okay, sounds good.
Twenty-three ten ten.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, all right, we're done with that. Thank you so much, staff. Um, great job, great job on the outreach. All right, so next we have general business. We have nine A, a memorandum of agreement with the Oregon City School District in Clackamas County. For the implementation of the student library card program. This sounds like a feel-good item. And who is going to be doing that? Mr. Williams?
Yes, good evening, uh mayor, good evening commissioners. We are really, really thrilled to be here with you tonight. Uh, we originally thought we were going to be up at around nine thirty after a presentation that was on the agenda, so we didn't do a PowerPoint. So we we deliberately are keeping this short. Had I known, I would have asked John Lewis, you know, help me with the PowerPoint that we could have taken another hour um to to go through, but we did not do that. So. Um, I am joined tonight by our youth services librarian Barrett Miller. Um, she is the expert on this. So as we go through, if you have any questions on anything, I'm just going to punt them over to Barrett. Uh, but briefly, um, we are really thrilled to be bringing this to you tonight. This is something that we have been working on um at the library for about four years at this point. And honestly, um I have been working on this in various previous capacities for almost a decade. So this is very gratifying to finally be where we are to be able to bring this to you. Uh, what we are here asking you for you tonight is your authorization for the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Clackamas County and the Oregon City School District. Uh, to initiate a program uh under which parents would be able as part of their enrollment um for school every year. To be able to opt in to a special student library card. Uh, the student library card would have a limit, limited number of checkouts the student would be able to um have, they could put holds on. Um, the best thing is it would be tied to their student ID number, so they don't need to memorize a new library card number. They already know their student ID number. Um, after the uh, after the school district has gone through their annual process of of getting everybody their class roster set, they would forward the data over to the county. The county would take that data, create these school library card accounts in the integrated library system that we all use throughout Link, Clackamas County. Uh, and create those library card accounts. Um. We are, we estimate there's about, and Barrett can correct me if I misspeak on this, there's about seven thousand students in the Oregon City School District. Uh, we don't know exactly at this point exactly how many of them already have library cards, but we do feel this is going to be. A great way to reduce barriers to library card, um having a library card and access to library materials. Uh, partnerships like this are pretty common in the library and school world. Multnomah County Library has a partnership with their um schools and Portland Public Schools. Washington County Libraries have similar partnerships. Uh, since the Oregon City Library loves to be first in everything, this will be the first partnership of its kind within the libraries in Clackamas County Cooperative. So. Go Oregon City, um going trailblazing there. Um, and uh with that, that that's about all the information that I have. Um, if you have any questions, Barrett is here to answer them. Um, but before we allow, before any questions, I do one again, want to just recognize the substantial amount of work that Barrett has put into this, especially over the last two years. There is a lot that goes into doing something like this, especially within a library cooperative environment and Barrett has navigated all of those challenges. Uh, superbly and has coordinated and made sure that we're going to have a great program. Um, I want to acknowledge our library board who has strongly supported this since the first time we mentioned it to them. Um, they felt strongly enough about it that they included in our two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-five library tactical plan, so it'd be nice to check that off. Um, I want to um recognize the uh Clackamas County Link Library Support Services Office. They're the ones who are actually, they maintain the system that's gonna, you know, and they're going to support us in doing this with our school district. And then I want to thank the school district for their support and their enthusiasm for entering into this program. Um, and with that, Barrett uh or I are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? I guess my question is, why the heck did this take four years? I just, it's a no-brainer.
We 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 started it, I I think it was probably one of the first uh, the first meetings I had in two thousand and twenty when I I first started with the school district and then, you know, a little thing called COVID. Um, hit. And so we had to kind of put it on the, put it on the table for a little bit. Um, and then we started uh going up, you know, re- re- energize this effort in two thousand and twenty-two and a- as I mentioned, there there's a lot of pre-work. That has to be done in a library cooperative like this. We we don't get to do things just on our own. We have to make sure we're doing it in such a way that every other library within the cooperative is comfortable with it. And again, Barrett's done a great job of shepherding it through that process.
Well, I'm going to ask you the dumb follow-up question. Why would they not be supportive of this? Could you say it a tactful way, I presume?
I I I would say that um, you know, library professionals uh take uh. They get systems set up the way they like them, um and they want to make sure that any data that gets into a system, you know, some people just have, you know, great ownership over it, want to make sure it's absolutely perfect. You know, with something like this, there's always the possibility that somebody's going to end up with a duplicate library card. Um, I, eh eh well, that that is a philosophical difference. So those are some of the issues that we just had to kind of. Talk with our other libraries about. Barrett, do you have anything you want to, you want to add on that?
Yeah, one of the other things that has come up is that different. School districts have different levels of comfort about approaching this kind of process. And I know that there there are some districts that um. You know, they want to see another library in Clackamas County do it successfully first before they join on. They have a little bit of hesitation or they just have a little bit of hesitation about, you know, data sharing. They're concerned about student privacy and maintaining student privacy. And the whole pro- prospect of entering into this partnership can be a little bit scary for schools, you know, even though libraries are. As privacy minded as schools, if not more privacy minded and very committed to protecting student data, like that is a barrier for concern. So there was also a little bit of a challenge in that not all schools were interested in participating. And so that was another thing that we kind of had to work through as a county of how we were going to handle this. And how we were going to approach it in a way that would work for the schools and libraries that do want to be part of this, but then also in a way that, you know. Is also mindful of the fact that not all, not all schools are comfortable like at this moment doing it and how how to navigate that whole process as well.
Other questions? Rocky? Okay, do we have a a motion to uh approve the memorandum of agreement?
I will move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the school district and Clackamas County.
There a second? That's seconded by Commissioner Marl?
Yes.
Let's have the vote.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for all the uh. Hurting and wrangling, et cetera. I just, I can't understand why somebody wouldn't want to do this. It's just, okay. It's just me, just me, sorry. Seems like a great thing to do. I I think maybe they had the same situation where they talked about. People getting their voter registration when they got their driver's license. I mean. Okay.
Well, thank you all very much. Thank you for your report. We're so excited about this.
Thank you. Are there's going to be a special library card for the students or is it going to just be the same old regular library card? Not that there's such a thing as a regular library card.
Barrett, you want to take that?
Yeah, um, so one of the things that we've been looking at in this process is how to make it feasible to do, to do this for seven thousand students at Oregon City and then eventually to be doing it for every school district in Clackamas County. And one of the things that we realized is that issuing physical library cards was going to be a huge challenge. And because it's going to be using the school, student's ID number, we can't really easily print that. So what we're doing is we're going to be sending schools like um, like template, card stock templates for students to kind of have their, write their information on their own library card and then they can decorate it however they want. Um, so it'll be like a customized uh principal, a customizable one that we can use to kind of. Have a a place for students to record that information, but that doesn't require us to generate thousands of custom cards.
Oh, unless somebody wants one.
They want a card, they can come in and upgrade to a general card and get full.
Okay.
The beauty of the library.
Oh, awesome. Okay. All right, thank you so much. Um, let's move to item nine B, my my now second favorite topic of the entire world. Climate-friendly and equitable communities parking reforms.
Hi, goo- good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I'm glad to hear that this is a topic you're looking forward to talking more about. Um. I I do have a presentation and so I will. Um, let's see, bring that up if I can. Find that. Oh, that's interesting. Okay, um.
I didn't hex it, I didn't jinx it, sorry.
Give me one second. I'm not sure why it's not. Uh, showing up here for me. Let's see. Okay. There we go. All right, and I hope you all can see that. Um, let me get this. Okay, all right, um, so. Tonight it is very similar to what I presented at the work session. Um. Was that last week? I've lost track of time in our s- storm outages. Um. But the difference is is that the meeting objectives are, is a little bit different. And so tonight I'd really like to get um. Some uh policy direction from from the city commission. Um, and then the other piece is we do plan to submit a grant application. Um, to D L C D. And so there's a resolution as part of this package tonight that basically supports the grant application. And the grant, uh, sh- should we be awarded the funding, it would be used to hire a consultant who would help um. Draft uh code changes and help with uh community engagement. Uh, so this is the timeline. Um, we're a little bit off the timeline right here and. Um, coming up, uh, very next thing will be to submit for this grant application. And then um we will come back to you, come back and and report out a status update in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, and ultimately, we want to be concluded by um the end of this year, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Um. And so what is climate-friendly, equitable communities? It's a program that aims to reduce climate pollution and provide more transportation and housing choices. Um, the legislature adopted a goal to reduce climate pollution by seventy-five percent back in two, two thousand and seven. And in two thousand and twenty-two, they found that Oregon was off track in meeting that goal. Um. And so. Um, that is when uh the governor um uh asked all state agencies to take actions to. Um, um, make impacts on. Um. On reducing um climate pollution. So the rules that were. Uh, required to to go through and adopt are adopting the climate-friendly areas and supporting electric vehicles. Reducing parking mandates and addressing critical gaps in walking, biking and transit networks. Um. Eh, and I I won't spend too much time on each of these slides because I, we did have an in-depth uh discussion last week. Um, but so the major. The major task groups that are part of climate-friendly and equitable communities are a climate-friendly study area, which we already comply with. Um, because that um complies through our. Um, regional center. And um, so we don't have to do anything there. Um, the reforms that we're working on this year are the electrical. Uh, electric vehicle conduit uh code amendments, parking minimums and parking maximums. And then there'll be more reforms in the future. Um, but those will come in the way that we uh go through our T S P update. And then eventually when we do our next housing needs analysis. Um, so the. These are the five main areas and we're, it it. The staff is um basically referring to five sets of reforms. So. Reform one is parking minimums, reform two is parking maximums, and then. Um, like we said, electric vehicle charging, parking design and bicycle parking. These are all things we'll have to work through. Um, so tonight, what what I'd really like to hear from you all is um. What direction you'd like to take on whether or not we should, whether or not the city should look at uh eliminating all parking minimums? And if not, um, then we have some other decisions that eh that need to be made, but that's kind of the first step to, first question and. Decision to wrangle with. So um a- and I can go back through what some of these um reforms. Are and what will be required. Um. But I kind of wanted to just. Move through these a little bit. Um, I'll go back one slide. So some of these are, these category one reforms were already. In place as of last year. These are things that we just really need to make sure that our code is. Um, matching what's already in the administrative rules, but we already have to abide by these rules. Category two are do, are rules that we can um kind of choose from a menu, if you will, um or at least. Find ways to meet um a- all of these items. So it is a long list. Uh, we do have to meet items A and B. Um, and then we would have, if we don't um. Um, eliminate parking minimums, we'll have to go through and make decisions about. Um, how we want to treat the regional center and then decisions about um kind of the rest of the city and and what. What kind of policies we want to adopt. So we can work through those as they come up. Um, one thing that we did talk about at the work session that I just wanted to bring up again is this um. The transit corridor map and what is left. Um. Outside of that. So one of the pieces that's in place right now is that we cannot require parking within. A half-mile buffer from a frequent transit line. So our frequent transit line is line thirty-three. And uh this alignment represents a future alignment. Um, it currently goes up Lynn and then in in the future it will be moving over to Malala. So we've buffered around what that looks like. And we've also buffered around the regional center. Um, which is this darker line. And um. Can you, when I mouse over these things, can you all see that mousing? Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, so what you'll see and what we talked about last time around is that. Um, what's left. Outside of that buffering i- is not a whole lot. So. We've got kind of this, you know, park place neighborhood area off of Holcomb. So we've got mostly uh residential areas up there. Um, and we currently don't re- regulate parking in uh residential areas. There's no minimums already. Um, we've got more medium and low density um. Uh, zoning outside of the buffer over here. This map actually doesn't include the South End concept plan, so there's kind of a little bit more out this way, but most of the. But most of the south end is also medium and low uh, density residential. And then the other piece is over here, kind of in Thimble Creek and along Beaver Creek Road. So there would be some areas that are not um residential that we would regulate. Um, including some campus industrial. Some mixed use, which, which has some regulations built into C-FEC. But this um purple is the campus industrial. And then I think there's some just kind of uh, industrial that, that wouldn't be regulated. And um, some just general commercial, just a little bit that falls outside of that buffer area. And generally the thought is that uses that go into those areas are. The market will kind of dictate what kind of parking they, they need. Not, they're most likely not going to be building uh, or constructing um, new developments without parking. And campus industrial is, is not something that's going to have um. A ton of, you know, big expansive parking lots anyway. So that's, that's one thing uh, to consider as we go through these policy changes. Um, I won't spend a whole lot of time on these other reforms, um, because well, there's not a lot of uh, policy questions right now. But we'll come back to them a- as, as our timeline moves on um, with, with. Potential code amendments and uh, what we're hearing from community engagement. But so electrical, electric vehicle charging, and that's really just providing the conduit for um. For the charging stations, not actually putting the charging stations in. Uh, we have to make, we do have to make some reforms to the parking um, maximums. And parking design that we've talked about. At bicycle parking. Um, so other cities, we talked about this a little bit as well. Um, most other cities are just uh, eliminating that, that minimum. Um, parking requirement. So Tigard, Springfield, Milwaukee, Lake Oswego, Albany. And then uh, there, there's a number of other cities that haven't taken action yet or have applied for extensions and are, are working on it right now. So uh, this is kind of where we're at. Um, this is what I'm here asking tonight is. One, if you, if the city commission approves uh, or supports a grant application. And so if you do, I would ask that you'd um, approve uh, resolution twenty-four oh three. If you're supportive of that. And then the second question is really if uh, staff should pursue amendments that. Uh, repeal the parking minimums. Um, and then if not, we'll need to kind of go through the other choices that. That, that will, that we'll need to make. So these are our next steps and I will leave it at that. I'm going to stop sharing. And if I need to bring, bring anything back up on the screen, just uh, let me know.
Well, who wants to lead off the discussion? I can see we're just all stunned. Nothing?
Well, all right, I'll jump in. And, and, and hear me out on this whole point. Parking is a terrible use of real estate. And parking does keep housing from getting built in some cases. But. Given the geography, topography, whatever, uh, of, of Oregon City. And how spread out essential services are. And. The almost total lack of transit that we have. I, I just don't think we're ready to eliminate all parking minimums. And I know when you look at this map, we're, we're really playing on the margins. You know, whatever we decide doesn't have as much, nearly as much impact as what has already been dictated to us. By the legislature. So, you know, we are kind of playing in the margins and, and, and one of the reasons that I think that I'm. That I'm worried about eliminating parking minimums. Because some of these zones in these areas, like let's say out by Thimble Creek, uh, or in the south end area. There are, there are places where two different zones come together. And if a commercial or a, a, a commercial development goes in and doesn't provide parking. And then those cars spill out into a residential neighborhood on street parking. You know, that's a concern. So I, I guess what I'm saying, as, as much as, as much as I'd like to be able to say. Eliminate all parking minimums, I, I just don't think we're. Prepared for that yet.
Anybody else? Rocky, you're off mute. Does that mean you want to say something? I know you don't, but I. Well, actually Adam has his real hand and the fake hand up, so go for it.
Yeah, um, thank you. Um. I'll make a correction first. This wasn't the legislature for once. This was the governor through uh, an executive order. So uh, for once, it wasn't just the legislature screwing us over. Um, but first of all, I, I'll say there are very few things that I think could get me to want to choose to eliminate parking minimums. Uh, but the alternative is one of those things that could make me lean that way, simply because it's so convoluted and complicated. I mean, I'm looking at the electric vehicle charging infrastructure, require new buildings with five or more units to provide electric service. To forty percent of parking spaces. Do we think that forty percent of the cars that are being driven in Oregon City are electric vehicles? And furthermore, what demographics uh, of our population do you think is more likely to drive an electric vehicle? So I, I really just have a hard time with the alternatives uh, that we would have to adopt. Uh, if we were to uh, keep the parking minimums and given that they're in such. An outskirtsed part of the community, right now I'm, I'm just leaning toward doing the blanket. Um, elimination. And, and I agree with points that Commissioner Mitchell said, like for example, especially with commercial. Uh, I think we have uh, some instances where there is so much parking in areas where it could be utilized better. I'm thinking right now of the Albertson's parking lot in particular. I think that's way too much parking uh, in that there, it could be used to a, a higher. Uh, use. And so I understand part of this and I'll also say, um, part of this, uh, this policy wasn't just aimed at reducing emissions. But was also to encourage the, the housing development and hopefully affordability option. But I'll, I'll just state that for me, if I'm looking for a place that's affordable and that unit does not have parking. Uh, then that's just not an option. And that's not an option for most people, uh, that would be looking for an affordable place. And so um, even though I find so many issues with eliminating parking minimums, I just feel that it's the better alternative.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Mitchell. Think the only thing worse than a dictate from the legislator is an executive dictate from the governor. For me, it's like a true, false question. If any aspect of the question. Is, is false, you certainly can't make market true. So I, I disagree with the. The parking components of it, and I'd certainly disagree with the electronic, electric uh, vehicle components of it. Watching the market and watching who buys in the forty percent figure. And I know it's just about putting in the infrastructure to support a future of forty percent. But. You know, I realize that, I mean, the easy thing to do is do what the other cities do, but I'm, I'm not willing to do that. So I lean with uh, Commissioner Mitchell. Thanks.
Well, I'll jump in. I am totally unhappy with this whole process. And not because I don't believe in climate friendly. I, I don't believe in the way that it's been dictated. I would like to hold off on doing anything until I find out what happens with our law, with the lawsuit that we join. I think that we have, as was stated previously, the cart is before the horse. I have never agreed with the half mile. It doesn't make sense for us geographically. Maybe if we did it a quarter mile or an eighth of a mile around a transit. It's just like, when I looked at that map again, it just made me crazy because I'm looking at and thinking. Are there people that are going to walk a half a mile to get to the thirty-three? Um, the whole stuff with the transportation and the climate friendly is predicated, including let me just throw in tolling. Is predicated on a transit system that does not exist in our area and we have no. Indication from TRIMET that it will ever exist. And so putting all this in place is predicated on transit. Being available through many parts of our city where it is not. So we're doing all this stuff to try to get people out of their cars and it is not going to happen without the transit system. And the only way that I would be able to support any of this is we put a caveat in it to put the pressure on TRIMET. To say that we'll adopt this when you get the system in place, because then it makes sense. I don't agree with eliminating parking and I'll tell you why. I agree with you, Michael, that yes, it is not the best use of land, but again, as you stated, given the geographic constraints. There are certain areas in Portland that I just don't go into anymore, not because I don't want to go to Hawthorne Street or some of those. I don't like having to park my car in front of other people's houses because it's reminiscent of my neighborhood. And I don't think it's fair to those people to have to put up with all that commercial. So I just, I try not to go over there because then I don't have to deal with that. And it just, you know, how long are you going to circle the block before you find something on the main street? And I mean, I just, the other thing is we've got somebody that is wanting to eliminate parking in my neighborhood. It's a two-hour parking zone. We're going to add more units to a street that's already congested because there's no parking. It, it's, it's just not making sense. I, and I agree with you about the, I do think we should have electric vehicle parking, but to put in forty percent. You know, again, the people that I know who have electric vehicles, um, are people who are not looking for a portable housing. They're able to put in charging stations in their homes. Um, and electric vehicles are not reasonably priced anymore. They're eliminating all the subsidies. So how many more people are going to be getting those? I don't see anybody building any new units today that's coming online in Oregon City that's putting in electric vehicle charging spaces in case somebody wants one. So we're doing a whole lot of things on a wing and a prayer and hoping that our transit system will catch up with us. And I, I just, I have just no confidence in TRIMET to get there. And it just bothers me that all over the place we're making these changes. You know, the only place that this really kind of works is in the hub, you know, where you've got transit. And again, I see the city of Portland putting undue pressure on their neighborhoods. By throwing all this parking there and I, I just don't know. I just, I, I can't, I support the grant. But what is going to come of it? If we're not really able to, to do this, and I don't want to be forced to do something that doesn't work for our community. And right now, I don't think this works for us. Is there any way that we can change that half-mile ratio to get it down to something that actually works for Oregon City? You know, I'm looking at how I, how we tailor this to meet the concerns and the needs of our community as opposed to the one-size-fits-all. Let's just eliminate everything and let's look at what the unintended consequences are of eliminating that. I don't think we have outlined that as a community or as a staff to say, what is going to happen if we eliminate all of this? I, I just, I, I see not good things coming out of it. So I, I just have, I just have real concerns that we've got the cart before the horse. And what are we going to do to try to force TRIMET into, to working with this? Are they involved in this process at all?
Um, so a couple of things, I, as far as I know, TRIMET is not involved in this process. But they have a different. Initiative, I'll call it called, I, I think it's called Forward Together. So they, they've been working with us and, and working with our staff. And uh, on um, um, bus stops and transit stops. I don't, from what I have seen, the little bit I've, that I've been involved, they haven't necessarily talked about increasing transit. Or adding lines or at, or adding like a second um, frequent transit line. So, so they're, they're kind of off doing their own thing, not necessarily directly related to, to the climate-friendly equitable communities. Um, but I need to make a point about the electric vehicle charging stations. And that is that the um. The code or the, there are already administrative rules that are in place that we have to enforce. So that forty percent of parking spaces for buildings with five or more units is something that's already gone into effect. And so if there's a new development that comes in today, um, with five or more units, we will have to require that. What, whether it's in our code or not. So it's kind of one of those things where we would be making, we would. If we made amendments to our code, it would basically be to kind of streamline. And make sure that we are in line with what um, the state is already. It has in their administrative rules. Um, so some of those reforms that I talked about, the electric vehicle charging and the parking maximums and the, the bicycle parking. We have, there's reforms that we will have to make anyway. Um, whether we choose to um, eliminate minimums or not, we'll still have to go back and, and make those changes. And then with the grant application, I think what it, we could do with that. Is if we choose not to eliminate all of the minimums. Um, we have um, these other policy choices and codes that we will need to um, write. Or we will need to make amendments anyway. And so that's what that grant uh, funding would go towards would be to. Um, uh, trying to do the best that we can to make our code amendments. Um, comply with the administrative rules.
But what about coming up with something that's not in the administrative rules that works better for our community? I, I, I'm just going to say it, I'm not afraid of the state. You know, I, I just. You know, ten, five, ten years ago, I probably would not have said that, but I'm in a different position right now. And I'm looking at this as being an onerous uh, mandate on our community that doesn't totally work for us. And so we have to come up with something that works better for us and also convince them that this is going to work better for us than all the stuff that they've come up with. I, I just don't think that there's got to be a third, you know, we've got column A, column B, and to me, there's got to be a column C somewhere. It's got to work in this town with what we have to work with. That's, that's been my gripe about all this stuff all along. It's one size does not fit all. Now, I don't know how you guys feel about that. We've got a lot of smart people in this state. We've got a lot of smart people in this room and elsewhere. We ought to be able to come up with something that works for Oregon City. I just, I, I feel very strongly about that. I think we can do that.
I'm in agreement with uh, Mayor McGriff. I mean, he's much more eloquent than I, but that's exactly how I feel about it.
So, um. So would, would we be okay pursuing the. Grant application to look for a way that uh, to, to look for that kind of third column. That you, that you referenced of, you know, what works for Oregon City.
I would support that.
Okay, I, I mean, I think that, I think what we're going to be tasked with is. Meeting, complying somehow with the administrative rules. And maybe that is not how I've laid it out in the slides or exactly how they've kind of laid it out in their guides. But maybe there's other ways to um, comply with those administrative rules. And so that's, that would be my uh, ask of, of a consultant. Is can, can you look at our codes, look at the administrative rules? And how can, you know? How can we um, make it work? And so part of that's going to be coming back to you, right? Back to you and the community and planning commission with some ideas of. Here's some ways we can try to comply with these. rules. Does this work?
I, I think there also needs to be a lot of community outreach to get people to understand how we might be able to make it work for Oregon City. I, I, I guess I have a maybe naive belief that, you know, if we were like Flat City, like Tigard or, or Newburgh or someplace like that, or even Beaverton, it's different. We, we just have too many things that we can't control or change about this town that we have, you know, geographically, we don't have any control over that. It is what we have. And I would think that we could find a way to follow the intent of the code, but make it work for here. That's, that's my bottom line. Commissioner O'Donnell.
So, do the terms of the grant allow allow the recipient to pursue a solution that would not comply with the dictates of the state? That strikes me as, I don't think we'd be awarded the grant. We said our intent is to pursue a solution does not fall within that which you're already dictating.
Well, we're not gonna say it that way. We're gonna say, we're gonna try to find a way to make, make the administrative rules and what the city of the Oregon City needs work. I mean, it's pretty generic.
Right. There, I, I do think I would have, uh, I need to have a conversation with the, the DLCD staff along those lines um, before submitting the grant application.
Well, don't tell them everything. Tell them what, tell them what they need to know.
This is on YouTube.
Oh yeah, like they're gonna spend all their time watching our YouTube meetings. I don't think so.
You know, you can't go anywhere right now. There's an ice storm.
That's right. So they're gonna be bored and watch, watch the city's meetings. I, I just, I believe that there's got to be a way. There's gotta be some flexibility. I mean, we, we went on the premise of the twenty forty plan making it work for Oregon City. And I saw that process evolve and I was just excited about the fact that we were making it work for us. And that was, I think that was a, 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 a great achievement. And I just have equally high hopes for this as well. We just need to explain that we're trying to find a way to follow the guidelines that are laid out that works and could be implemented in Oregon City without a minimum of angst. And maybe that's just the way we say it.
Well, that is helpful. I think I've got the direction that I need. I've heard that there is not support for eliminating all parking minimums. And I think I've, I've, I think I've heard maybe not from three of you, but at least two that you might be in support of the, of pursuing a grant if we can use it to find a way to make, make it work for Oregon City.
Rocky, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
And, and I am also.
Adam?
Thank you. Uh, so to clarify, regardless of what we do, uh, the administrative rules are, would require the up to forty percent or the forty percent uh, EV availability for commercial. And then the twenty percent is that, that's for, or the twenty percent is for commercial and then the forty percent is for the residential?
Did Aquilis freeze? I think she did. She's frozen.
She's frozen.
Yeah.
Mitch McConnell moment. Sorry, that was rude. I'm sorry.
Yeah, please take that back, please. That was terrible. That was awful. Don't compare anybody to him.
Trying to take the heat off the mayor.
I, you guys know that I strongly believe in the Oregon's Landes Planning Program. I just don't believe in having it fed, forced down our throats. Gotta be, it's gotta be another, I'm trying to thread the needle. Thread the needle. She'll be back as soon as we get her back online here. She just, maybe the power went out, out there. So it looks like we're gonna go to try to pursue a grant and we'll see. Um, I think, again, I'm optimistic. I think there's a way we can make it work. We've got some persuasive arguments to say, hey, you know, this is what's gonna work here. We've got other issues we've got going on. So gotta be a way. I won't go out and absolutely defy the state at this point.
Well, I'll just say that um, while we're waiting for her to get back, if that is in fact the case that those are the EV requirements regardless of whether we eliminate parking minimum citywide or not. Uh, if that is the case, uh, then I'm supportive of going forward uh, with the grant and seeing how this best fits within our community. That was my one hangup was if we decided uh, to go the other route, then we would have to choose from a menu of options, which included uh, things about EV charging stations, which for me, um, I think are just at this point in our city's history are reserved parking spots for the, for a, a certain demographic of uh, community members of which we have very little at this point.
I, I don't disagree with you at all. I think it's, it's, you know, talk about uh, a little bit of disparity. It's, it's creates some disparity, you know, unless somebody's giving out electric cars for free.
Right. And, and I was just before we were coming to this meeting, I was watching the news and they were talking about how the cold weather drastically affects the battery life of these electric vehicles. And so um, I, I, I totally support the fact that we have uh, more fuel-efficient uh, vehicles and the positive impact that has on our uh, communities and our environment. My big hangup was that if that was going to be the alternative, uh, then I could not support it. And that's the only reason I was leaning toward uh, just a blanket elimination, but um, it sounds like, uh, even though she's not here, that uh, that is not the case. So uh, I'm supportive as well.
Yeah. So I think, again, we can thread that needle, you know, as well. Um, yes, I heard the same report on NPR and I thought, yeah, that makes so much sense about uh, really cold weather and EVs and, you know, what happens there. And apparently that, they don't like cold weather. So she'll eventually get back on. So um, let's move on.
I think, yeah, Aquila's, Aquila's struggling with her internet right now.
Yeah, that's okay.
Dropped where she's at.
Yeah, I think we can.
I guess Commissioner Marl, I don't have a, I, I, I don't have a specific response. I, I I worry that, I mean, we're gonna have to get pretty creative, cause while it's like, it's options, the options are very um, there's not, not a lot of room for wiggle, I guess, or interpretation of these. But you know, I guess that could be part of this process, right? I mean, the other, I think the other component would be, you know, by not doing the, without waiving the minimum parking and needing to go through this other process. I'm not sure I fully come, um, you know, fully understand, like, how many of these do we comply with now? How many could we meet with small changes? Right? Um, some of them, pick two of five policies. Okay, did we already meet two? You know, we have a parking district downtown. We, we charge for parking downtown. A lot of jurisdictions don't, uh, our size have metered parking downtown. So I mean, I guess I, I wanna be careful that, you know, we're not, they feel that they're, they're presented as choices, but when you read them.
They don't sound like it.
Yeah. But, you know, I mean, if I wanted to, right? Uh, tax commercial parking lots. I'm not sure and I don't know it well enough. How much do we have to tax them?
One dollar.
Right? We taxing them. I mean, so I think that's more of how do we take what's here and meet this to, to form something that fits with our city with the um, latitude to interpret and imply those areas where they're not very specific. But, I don't know, Carrie, you got anything to add to this? I'm not, I mean, I feel, I, I, I feel a little bit like we're pigeonholed a little, but
I don't want her to be scolding us.
No, I don't think it's scolding. I think it's being creative and, and applying these.
Yep. Taking off the planning hat.
I think that these, when you read these, they feel fairly prescriptive, but I think when you actually think about the language and how it would actually be implemented, there's not a lot of guidance. So I see a fair amount of discretion. In a, a, so I think you're gonna have to do one of the five things in the list or one of the three things in the list, but you know, like Tony says, whether you can accomplish it i- in a way that meets Oregon City's needs, I think is open for question. And I think, um, you know, you get grant money, you get a consultant who can really dive into these things, and then you will better understand the, you know, how, how onerous this list really is, because I really don't have any idea.
Thank, welcome back, Aquila. We know you, you had a little disruption there. I, I, again, I think that a- again, you know, without getting into the whole philosophical thing, I think this was probably put out with the best of intentions without a real recognition of what this really means when local governments have to try to implement something that is again, we seem to always go back to the one-size-fits-all and I, it just, it just does not work. So I think what we wanna try to do is thread that needle and uh, you've got consensus from the commission to, to go for the, to go for the grant and we need a motion to do the resolution, but we're gonna go to Commissioner Morrow first, so.
Thank you. I'll just close uh, that I, the, the one thing that gives me hope in this is still the fact that uh, we have a private market that is likely still going to incentivize developers to include some sort of uh, parking, whether there is that minimum or not. And so that is my one hope uh, with moving forward with this is that, that's still an attraction for people that are looking, uh, and hopefully uh, developers will uh, follow that.
Couldn't agree more. I know that when I bought my house, it had some off-street parking and that was a, that was a big plus for me. So, all right, do we have a, um, do we need to take a look at this resolution to make sure there's nothing in here that, that locks us into something fairly specific? Or is it general enough that we can do what we asked to have to do? I'm looking at it again and it looks like it's okay to me. So do we have a motion for resolution twenty-four dash zero three? Don't all speak up at once. You're gonna make the motion, uh, Michael?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve uh, resolution twenty-four dash oh three.
Second.
Commissioner Rocky Smith? Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I think, thank you all, and I apologize for that. We had a little bit of a power blip.
Yeah, you're, you're not in charge of that, but thank you. It's not your fault.
Right. I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope it's not giving you, we don't want to give you gray hair, but you know, use our comp plan as the model. All right. First reading of ordinance twenty-four zero zero one, adopting city code amendments for regulations of rubbish, construction hours, garage sales, graffiti, parking and all sorts of other juicy fun things. And we have our intrepid staff from our police department and code compliance and the city manager.
Hi Mayor, Commissioner, good evening. Um, I do have Ryan Kirsty here, our code enforcement manager, to uh, present ordinance twenty-four dash one zero zero one. Uh, as you remember, in November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, we had a work session where we discussed uh, uh, where the commission brought forward a discussion regarding uh, municipal code ordinances that involve potential update language and new ordinances. Uh, also, we presented that code enforcement staff had encountered uh, some ordinances that weren't clearly defined and they needed to be specified in our city's municipal code. Uh, the topics that we discussed on that were garage sales, construction hours, graffiti removal, prohibited stopping standing and parking, scattering rubbish, and a change to the code hearings officer language, which was uh, presented in the consent agenda. Staff worked hard um, with the codes as directed by the city commission. We worked with the city attorney and made these changes. Uh, so ordinance twenty-four dash one zero zero one will include changes to chapter eight twenty point one six oh nine twelve and ten oh eight oh nine oh. And I can go through all those if you would like. Um, I broke them down into different exhibits, A through E, which are attached. I also provided a clean version uh, for you to read. I would add that it was brought to my attention that under ten oh eight oh nine oh C, uh, that's a new paragraph added. Uh, I inadvertently left out Saturdays, so it should read uh, in part, except for authorized by a valid city issued parking permit, no person may park a motor vehicle in any on-street permit parking zone between hours of seven AM and six PM or in an off-street city parking lot, or without paying for parking fees during the hours of seven AM to six PM Monday to Fri- Monday to Friday, except for Saturdays, which I left out Sundays and observed legal holidays. Uh, so Ryan, Ryan Kirsty and I are here to answer any questions. If you wanna go line through line through these, we'd be more happy to do that too.
And there's, there's no PowerPoint?
We did not do a PowerPoint. I kinda like uh, our uh, library, uh, Greg Williams, that, you know, we thought it would be uh, a long night and uh, we'd just gone over it about two months ago. So I figured we covered everything in the staff report and the attachments.
Gentlemen, Mr. Smith?
Um, forgive me if this was asked at the last time we went over that, because um, I'm reading, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the definition of standing is. Is that refer, cause in, when, in the way it's read, it's refer, you know, shall not stop, stand or park a vehicle. So is it talking about standing as a term that represents something that the vehicle's doing, meaning? Or is that meaning someone's standing there as their person?
Mean like standing next to a car?
Right, I'm.
Yeah, so ORS, Oregon Revise Statute does have uh, Oregon stuff, uh, stopping, standing and parking.
The only reason I ask because frequently you see cars, oh, I'm not parking here. I'm just sitting here. You know, and you're like, well, okay, what's that mean? Is, is the term standing means something specifically in, in that respect or? Cause clearly stopping means like, you know, it doesn't matter if you're, you're, you know, parked or not, you're stopped with your car and you're in a spot, you're you know, that's technically counting as that, but I guess I'm trying to understand what the standing part means.
I'd have to refer to uh, Carrie Rick on that, but I think it's a legal definition of
Yeah.
That's adopted in the state ORS. We talked about, do we do we define what OR, what or illegal stopping, standing or parking, but that, uh, just like the ORS, um, Oregon Revise Statute and this section ten point oh eight oh nine oh basically says you can do, you could park anywhere as long as you don't do one through twelve and then be, or A one through twelve and so on. So it's legal to do it as long as you don't do it here.
Can we look that up? To try to answer his question? And then move on to the next one and then come back to it?
It's really from my own personal knowledge, because I know definitely in various places I'm at, I'm saying, I'll, you know, see someone parks somewhere and say, hey, you can't park there. Like, well, I'm not really parked here. I'm just doing this. I was like, well, you know, you're in a handicap spot, you're sitting there.
Yeah. Oh, my favorite is, I'm only gonna be there for a minute.
Right. I'm only gonna be here a second. I'm not really parking here. So I'm assuming that standing means something, that it means.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. They went through and adopted the uh, ORS eight eleven five five five, which talks about the person stops, parks or leaves standing a vehicle in a place where such stopping, parking or standing is prohibited. So basically a reference is basically just a vehicle that's brought So basically, a reference is basically just a vehicle that's brought in. It more clearly defines it to, if somebody stops to, you know, let somebody out maybe for a minute, pick them back up, the vehicle could be running. Um, it's a ORS term that's just been adopted through all the laws, so.
Doesn't make any sense, though, but that's okay.
Okay. I just see this a lot at school, I'm just saying, so. With, you know, fire lanes and.
I have, I'm, Mr. Smith, I have it. ORS 801 380 defines it, and park or parking means the standing of a vehicle, whether occupied or not, otherwise intemporarily for the purpose of, um, and allow action engaged in loading or unloading a property or passengers.
Got it.
So it's a temporary, kinda like stopping, it's kinda like what you're saying. The temporary, I'm just waiting for someone or whatever. It might seem like an Uber driver, or.
Yeah.
I've been doing that.
So is there a reason that, um, fire lanes are not part of this? Because that's not one of the 12 things I'm seeing there.
Oh, defer to Riley to be included as this one.
We're adding the disabled parking, but it would seem to me that, you know, marked fire lanes would be another.
Another place where they shouldn't be stopping, standing, or parking.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say if it's defined somewhere else.
Okay.
In our code.
Okay.
My favorite is the one where they pull into the turn lane to go to the bridge and unload whatever it is to the restaurants that are along there and are, are there for more than a minute.
Yeah.
With their, with their ramp.
I didn't want it to derail, I just wanted to understand that term a little bit more.
That, on that, um, list of 12, uh, the number 12 that we just added, then that, this is just a grammar thing, but the wording on number 12 is, is a little goofy, cause it's, so it says, which shall and include but not be limited to stopping, standing, or parking, parking of any vehicle within the planner. It really just needs to say, within the planner for parking.
Yeah.
So just eliminate parking of any vehicle. And then the other question I have on the parking thing here is, I, I've read that paragraph, new paragraph C, a bunch of times, and I'm still trying to figure out what it, what it means.
Always bad when you start it with except. That's like starting it with a prepositional phrase.
I think, I mean, what it's trying to get to, so the out, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday to Friday, you can't park in an on-street parking zone or an off-street city parking lot, or without paying the fees. Is that, am I getting that right?
Yeah, and what we're doing is adding it to the existing one, so it moves it down, and then it adds that as actual letter C. So that's why it was listed that way in the report.
Wouldn't it be clearer to, clearer to start it with, no person may park a motor vehicle, blah, 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 except when authorized by a valid city issued parking permit?
And that's, that's in 108090 already, A, B, and then C is the same.
I know, but again, it's, it's, it's the syntax and the grammar of the sentence that's out of order. That's the problem. You're starting it with except and saying, you cannot do this, 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 or this. And then the thing is, except if you have a valid permit. It's, it, you're starting it with saying, except we're authorized, no person may. It's, it's, again, starting a sentence with a prepositional phrase when you really mean it to say something else. It's, it's just.
Well, I think that's, I think like B says, except also, right? So it says you can stop, stand, or parking, right? And, and it's trying to define when you legally can.
clarify for me, which exhibit are we looking at?
Sorry, exhibit E. Letter C, we're on to C, but B is also starts except, so it gives an exception of when you can legally.
I understand, I was just saying, it's, it's, it's not good grammar, I'm just telling you. I have a question about the parking in a planner strip. So we're saying any vehicle, what if somebody puts a pod in the parking strip?
Those are.
Are we, are we wanting to not have anything in the parking strip? That's, that's, I don't know if a pod, what, what it's considered as, but I'm concerned about pods being putting in parking strips, or a pod sitting on the street.
I think pods are already regulated through Public Works right-of-way permit process. According to our code, they're only allowed to be placed in the right-of-way, in the streets, and they have to get a permit for it. That's how we've addressed it in code enforcement and have them get permits through public works.
Okay, is there, is there something in here that says you have to get a, that you can't park one of those because it's dealing with this? And are, are we limiting only to vehicles, again?
Since this is the, um, parking standards, and the pod's not considered a vehicle, we don't cover it in here, it's covered in another section of the code.
What if they put a boat in the parking strip?
It would be considered under this section already as a vehicle, recreational vehicle. And those are already covered, you're not allowed to be parked in the right-of-way, should include that parking strip.
Is there anything, go ahead, Tony?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I'm sorry, I was going.
I was just gonna say, is there anything else that we don't want in the parking strip that might be constituting some sort of obstruction of vehicle, boat? I don't know. People can be very clever.
I hope we covered everything in that. I did also have a response for Commissioner Smith, his question about, uh, fire lanes.
Yeah.
We covered that under 108090A, number nine, where any place, uh, any, sorry, any place where official signs or markings prohibit stopping, standing, or parking, that's one of the violations already on there.
So that'll, that, that's existing, so that would catch the red, the red striped zone by fire hydrants as well as signage for no parking. So nine catches most of those, which we identify through paint and/or signage.
Okay. Um, and one, this is more of a comment, cause I don't think we're gonna have, we don't have a real specific answer, but on B, the word momentarily, right, momentarily, that's the problem, right? Cause people are like, oh, well, I'm just here for a moment. Well, your moment's been 10 minutes, or your moment's been, you know, 15 minutes picking up someone from whatever. Um, there's no real, um, specificity to momentarily, I guess. And so how do you, how do you deal with that?
Is it discretionary on whose moment we're dealing with?
I don't know how you say, well, okay, you've been here more than a moment. Well, my moment is, you know, hmm, I've been here for.
Well, I think, I think, yeah, I think you gotta take it in, in the context of the whole sentence, right?
Right.
Except to momentarily pick up or discharge a passenger, right? So if you're sitting there and you pull over and you let passengers out, and you're getting the next passengers in, right? I, I agree, momentarily in and of itself, without the action.
Right, someone's sitting on, someone's sitting on Beaver Creek Road for 10 minutes waiting for their kid to come out from the high school is not momentarily, but they would say it was. Um, and it happens all the time. So I, I think, um, you know, especially right there in the front of the school on Beaver Creek, where no one's supposed to be parking, it's every day.
Yeah, that's, that's dangerous.
Once again, though, I think you go into, I think you could sit there and say, okay, does this create, it's in such a manner or location that it constitutes a hazard to public safety? Right, I mean, so I think we gotta, I, I think we gotta take it in, in the context of the whole, cause that's the argument that we would make, right? Is that.
It constitutes.
This person sat here, we, we observed this person sitting on Beaver Creek Road for 10 minutes. That constitutes a hazard at this location, rather than focusing on the momentarily part of it. I don't know, Ryan, I'm probably getting ahead of myself here a little bit, but I mean, trying to read the intent would be the argument that we would make to the judge.
Right.
Cause I think if you said, they can sit there for three minutes, right? Or five, whatever, pick a number.
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't wanna.
You know, we're gonna sit there and hit a stopwatch, and, and some people may be okay to sit there for four or five minutes, where in other locations, it'd be dangerous to have them sit there for one minute, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I think we just need to, we just need to.
We gotta allow a little bit of, of the discretion of the enforcement officer to make the argument and the situation that it is. I, I, you know, if you make it too black and white, you know, you, you, you could actually, you know, make a situation much, much worse.
Well, everyone, everyone feels very strongly that the rules don't apply to them. Because.
That's, yeah.
That's, that's the crux of it. You know, the guy parking in the crosshatch of the handicap space says, oh, well, that's not the handicap space, and I said, yes, it is. It's not for you to be parking there. That's how they get at, well, nobody's here. You know, it's like, you hear, you, I've heard them all.
It's, it's a good thing that me and Denise don't walk around town all together all the time, because.
We'll give these guys some of my ticket books, has that?
No.
Ooh. Mr. O'Donnell.
So my issue with this one, and it goes back to something I asked Public Works, which they were less than receptive about. But on 090, section B4, says within 20 feet of a crosswalk at an intersection. A, a crosswalk is very specific. Not all intersections have crosswalks, correct?
Yeah. Correct.
So my argument has been, and why I think it's a safety thing, when you come out of some of these streets on Central Point onto a 35 mile per hour thoroughfare, and people are parking right up to the intersection, to the intersection, and you can't see, I don't think it should read a crosswalk. I think it should comply with the state rule, which is 20 feet to an intersection. So I would remove the crosswalk and just say intersection. And I still think, and I know John Lewis hates it, but those high-volume, those fast thoroughfares, I'd really like to see them paint some curbs back 20 feet, because trying to get out of some of these streets, it's, uh, it's pretty risky. In this case, all I say is remove the crosswalk portion of it and just say intersection.
Well, you're not, yeah, you're not wrong, um, Frank. It's also depends on what type of a vehicle is there, too. You have some of those, uh, step vans that they're really high, and you cannot see anything trying to get around one of those.
And I think, I think John, John is looking at adding that discussion to the Transportation Advisory Commission agenda for the February meeting, um, to, to follow up and figure out what we can do. And actually, um.
Well, I requested it.
I could. Yep, and they, yeah, so they're, they're getting it on the February one to have that discussion. Yeah, and, and actually, Commissioner O'Donnell, I did kinda wanna talk to you about clarity on that. I mean, are we talking every street? It's, it's a big, it's a resource issue, so that's my main thing. If we're doing it for every, you know, say, uh, collector like Central Point, then.
No, I'm, I'm just emphasizing the, like, Central Point. You come out of some of those side streets on the Central Point, and even have SUVs parked right up against the intersection on either side. It's all you can do to eke out there and try to get, get into the flow of traffic. I don't want you to do it on every residential thing. I mean, I know, but, but I wanna comply with the state law.
I didn't say that, but we've got a lot of Central Point-like streets, and that's what you're talking about. You want those, you want pretty much every side street marked for, that's intersecting with a collector or neighborhood collector, right?
Well, I try to position code enforcement and law enforcement in a very solid place so that somebody can say, well, I didn't know it was within 20 feet. Well, they should know, because it's in the driver's manual for one. But for two, I mean, if you paint it, it makes a certain, that's something you can work out, but I, I don't think we should just limit this to if there's a crosswalk there.
I would, can I add in there, Commissioner O'Donnell, under 811, ORS 811 550, uses exact, uh, number 17, uses the exact same language that we have. It says, within 20 feet of a crosswalk at an intersection. We're mimicking ORS, uh, in our code.
Well, Commissioner O'Donnell's asking whether or not we can eliminate the word crosswalk and just say an intersection.
And I'll go back to the state law and see if I'm correct, or if, or if crosswalk is specified at every year. I don't think it is.
It doesn't have to be marked, um, they're designated there, whether they're marked or not.
Well, you're saying every intersection is a, has a crosswalk by definition?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, so, okay.
Every cross, every intersection that has a crosswalk or not is defined as a crosswalk? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, if they have ramps to the street, I think they're considered crosswalks, probably even if they're not.
Okay, well, I mean, when I, when I hear the word crosswalk, I expect to see it marked. I don't.
Yeah, they don't have to, it doesn't have to be marked. It could be marked to assist, but it does not have to be marked. Um, that's where we run into, uh, people trying to cross the street, and people then think they had to stop, but they actually had to stop because it is a crosswalk, because it's at the edge of an intersection.
Intersection. Adam?
Yeah, I, I share Commissioner O'Donnell's concerns, um. And I, I think that obviously there is a resource allocation question to, if we were to, to, to do that. Um, I'll just, uh, speak to my personal experience when I moved into the McLaughlin neighborhood, uh, realizing how difficult it was to get out onto Seventh, um, from those, uh.
Fifth.
Right, um, that, it's a huge struggle. And so I think that if we were to charge the Transportation Advisory Committee to look at a, a limited scope of high-impact areas, not every single, um, not every single arterial, I think that's something that I would like to see, because, uh, it really is a safety problem. You're trying to move so far out into the actual street just to see one lane that you're likely to be hit by cars on the other lane, cause you're so far out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll throw something else in that's semi-applicable. I know in certain places in other jurisdictions, and again, I'm just throwing it, I'm not saying we have to do it, but there's places where if a vehicle is, would impede being able to see the intersection, if it's a certain height, they, some jurisdictions don't allow certain vehicles to be parked in a certain location, cause you can't see anything over them or around them. And I think, you know, we have a lot of topography issues, so there's places where you're trying to pull out, you got somebody coming up, and you got somebody coming down, and then you got this giant vehicle, you know, you can't see anything. A lot of times, if I encounter that, I just go the opposite direction to come back around, cause you can always come back around. But I see people doing questionable things at intersections where they can't see, like Adam just described. I saw one yesterday when I was going up Lynn Avenue. It was like, oh my God, I was waiting for the crash. So, anything else?
On all, have we, have we reached a consensus on Commissioner O'Donnell's suggestion to remove of a crosswalk?
Well, let's just ask everybody.
Yeah, well, apparently you don't have to if every intersection is defined as having a crosswalk. And, and I was looking at the state law, and you're right, within 20 feet of a crosswalk at an intersection. But if every intersection by definition has a crosswalk.
And that, that is Oregon law.
No, you're saying every intersection is considered to have a, is considered to be a crosswalk.
Yes.
I think where we run into unique areas is, say, like in some neighborhoods where there is no sidewalks. And so you come up to an intersection, uh, there's still a crosswalk to be able to cross that street, whether there's a sidewalk there or not, so.
Or marked.
Correct. And the state law says it could be marked or unmarked, doesn't have to be.
Well, a suggestion for the Transportation Committee to take a look at maybe finding those specific areas that would auto-apply this is, is worthwhile.
Well, why don't you add marked or unmarked? That makes it absolutely clear.
That's clear, yeah.
I can see somebody arguing that point, even though you quote the state law, they're not gonna look up the state law.
No. Marked or unmarked makes it pretty solid.
Well, makes the, so, yeah, we need, we, I'd like to talk more about it, cause I'd like, it sounds like I need to do some learning on there. But it, uh, what I'm not sure you're asking for is, a-again, we're going back to, we don't wanna mark everything. We want to find those key locations where there are hotspots in, um. So we'll, we'll, we'll study that and bring, bring that back to you.
The reason I, the reason I agree with marked or unmarked is my, my goal is with code enforcement is involved in a situation that has to. That has to take an action or law enforcement, they are on very firm ground. They don't have to get into a legal debate and try the case standing on a street corner. Marked or unmarked, we're done here. I'm saying you have to take an act. You can ask the person to move the car and put you on firm ground.
It's not saying that you have to mark them either, John.
We're talking about marked crosswalks, right? In this, in this conversation right now. Not talking about marked curbs.
No, we're talking about, yeah, right, right. Adam, do you have a consensus on that? Okay, Mike? Rocky? Obviously, Frank, you do, so, okay, can we make that happen?
Can I, yeah, can I run over all the changes or the additions to ten oh eight oh nine oh? I have. Uh, specifically ten, getting rid of parking of any vehicle, so it just says. Within the plant or planting strip. That's, uh, on B four. So be set, uh, would be add in within twenty feet of a marked or unmarked crosswalk at an intersection. Um, and then in C, add in Saturdays, which I forgot Saturdays. And do you want us to change the language with except or just leave as is?
Just, you can just reword that sentence, and when we get around to doing the rest of the code someday, we'll change the other except.
So should we just do when authorized by, just take out accept?
No, no person may park blah, 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 da da, when the hour is blah, da da, 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 except when authorized.
I think it's fine as written. Except is not a, a preposition.
Doesn't, like I said, it's just awkward, but. Let's just move forward.
And so we'll keep that language as is. Did we have any discussion on that and the other codes?
Construction hours ordinance, which is actually a noise ordinance. So a couple of things on that. And I'll get back to my, uh. My decimal meter at the end, but I'm curious about this one because. We can have a loud party and we have to bring that to a conclusion at ten. But we can't, the construction, and I presume it, it doesn't differentiate between. Commercial construction and some guy coming home at the end of his workday trying to accomplish something at his house. So according to this, any construction. Alteration or repair of any building. Gotta be done by six at night. And I just don't, you know, and I, I win or lose this one. I mean, six seems a little extreme. I mean, eight o'clock seems reasonable. And I understand. I just know there's times when I was working, I came home and tried to do a project. I'd like to have a few hours. Eight seems like a reasonable hour. So that's my one question, because it doesn't differentiate between a homeowner and a commercial venture. The other thing that I just struggle with, and this is, this is law enforcement. Nobody in law enforcement wants to go into court and say, I'm charging this guy with speeding because I stood there and observed him. And based on my subjective observation, disregarding light conditions and color of the car and noise. I say he was speeding. They don't do that. They use. A radar gun or a laser for a, a calibrated answer. That's. That you cannot defeat in court if everything is calibrated. And I don't understand why. And I don't know if other jurisdictions do this or not, do, do not use. Decimal meters and distance because that is, that's not subjective. That's an objective scientific measurement. And I don't know, does any, to your knowledge, chief, does any other jurisdiction use decimal meters or to your knowledge, Ryan?
Portland does.
Much better approach than the subjective thing where I thought it was too loud.
I guess my follow-up question would be, are we talking about the construction hours using a decimal meter instead of just saying. No more construction after a certain time, or are you talking about the noise ordinance in general?
Two different, two different situations. The construct, the construction thing is not noise. It's noise related but not measurable noise. I mean, that's just the simple statement of hours allowable. But though, we've sat up there and commissioned and listened to complaints about loud music and loud parties, and I've dealt with it personally. And I'll tell you what, it's subjective and it's hard to bring it to a conclusion, but if you took a reading and said the decimal meter is reading. Ninety decimals at a distance of sixty feet, or it's reading ninety decimals inside a home. Eighty feet from your party, that's a pretty darn solid piece of evidence.
I know that two jurisdictions, we have Clackamas County and the city of Portland. Um, with their noise ordinance, do you have decimal reader or decimal readings that they use in their ordinance? Portland's very detailed and goes by different neighborhoods. Clackamas County is very general, but they do have noise decimal readings in their ordinance for noise.
Well, I just think it's a much stronger approach, and having been involved in it personally and having heard a gentleman come before commission. Where we felt pretty powerless to help them. A decimal reading would have said, hey, you broke, you broke the threshold and we're done. Go ahead.
Well, I would say, um. There are things that you can do with regard to construction at your home. That you can get a few more daylight hours. I'm thinking of painting is not noisy. Personally, I don't wanna hear somebody with their nail gun, you know, after hours. Banging away, you know, next door to me, even though it's my neighbor. It's just. Construction should apply to everybody. And like I said, there are things people can do that don't make a lot of noise, you know? I'm out, I'm not gonna be out in my driveway with my, my radial saw going, you know, until ten o'clock at night because you can't see anything. But to your, to your point about the, the noise meter, and Tony, you may remember this, this going to the Wayback Machine. Uh, in the McLaughlin neighborhood, we purchased a decibel machi, a decibel reader because. Uh, Century Link or got, no, it was US West. I gotta go back to who they were before Century Link. Wanted to put in a cell tower in our neighborhood, and they were talking about how much noise it was going to make. So our neighbor bought one and went out and did a whole bunch of readings based on what the city of Portland does. And we were able to not get that conditional use approved because we were able to show that it was going to make enough noise to. Uh, just, you know, within a certain amount of feet and distance, we used noise, noise meter readings. But again, that was an extreme. Somebody bought one. And we went out and did a whole bunch of readings, and we were able to say, look, this is not something that we want in the neighborhood. Because it's noisy, and it was noisy, and they admitted it was going to be noisy. They didn't think we were gonna do that, so it has been done.
For the cell tower code, we did put in because they had a generator component usually or some type of a. Um, a motor, loud hum associated with those cell towers that was continuous in nature or very continuous in nature. You know, I think, I think, so. How long, this gets back to kind of the, the momentary stopping, standing. You know, is a part, you know, is, if, if I exceed the decimal level for ten minutes? Five minutes, an hour? You know, I think if we're gonna go that route, we need to be specific in what that means to exceed it. Cause I also think there's probably someone, you know. There's probably commercial uses that may exceed it. I mean, it depends where you set the decimal level. Is this truly just a residential? Um, type of a requirement. Um, you know, I know we had issues with like people warming up their cars in the morning. Yeah, I, I.
It's a slippery slope.
Yep.
Yeah, but it's a combination of time of day and decimal reading.
And I wasn't, I know there was discussion, but I wasn't part of a discussion. When the noise ordinance was revamped, and I, I believe, uh, Jesse Bus was part of that, that. Did it, and there was discussions of why we should and shouldn't use a decimal meter. I just don't know exactly what those conversations were when that was adopted.
Yeah, that was, that was Chief Band. Like, like you say, Frank, so you guys all know where I live. When I could hear the band from Singer Hill Cafe in my living room over the top of my TV. I said that was too loud. And I walked, and I walked over there and I said, I can't hear my television. Could you turn it down? And it was about this time at night, nine o'clock at night, and it was going, the funk, the funk, the funk, the funk, you know? And that, that was loud.
But once again, it puts law enforcement on a firm ground with a, a, objective measurement versus a subjective opinion.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt? The first reading of ordinance twenty-four zero zero one.
Mayor?
Yes.
I've got one other concern on another one of these.
Oh, please, go right ahead.
On, if you go to exhibit C, the garage sale one?
Yes.
And this may be a question for Ms. Richter. Sorry, I'm, I'm opening it back up again so I can get the exact wording. Come on.
You're talking about nine twelve oh four five?
Yes, so my question is, in the case of a rental property with a tenant who has a garage sale. Is a tenant the person in charge of the property?
Correct. That is correct.
Legally, they, they're in charge of the property.
While they're renting.
They, they are the tenants, so they are in charge of the property.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that rental tenants are, are covered under this. So if you say they are, I'm good.
They are, and the reason why we're using the word in charge of the property rather than tenant is because somebody could argue they're not a tenant. Right?
Yeah, well, we had a situation where a guy was using a rental property to operate his garage sale and he didn't live there. And it was going on every week.
Right. Okay, just wanted to make sure we were covered.
You put the kibosh on that one. So, all right, who's gonna make the motion? You guys are just not talkative tonight. Holy cow.
I'll move to approve, uh, ordinance, was it, uh, twenty-four? Is it?
One zero zero one. All right, is there a second and then Ms. Richter will read it?
Sorry, with the amendments as identified to ten dot oh eight oh nine oh. Correct?
Yes, I was gonna add that with the amendment, so.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Richter.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash one zero zero one. An ordinance of the city of Oregon City revising the city code, municipal code title. Eight point two zero one dot one sixty scattering rubbish and prohibited actions. Municipal code titled nine point one two dot oh two three E, construction hours. Municipal code title nine point one two point oh four five garage estate and yard sales. Municipal code title nine point one two point oh five zero graffiti removal. Municipal code title ten dot zero eight dot oh nine oh prohibited. Stopping, standing, and parking.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Only because I cannot agree with the construction hours and the noise ordinance component, I'll vote no. I do like the rest of it.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye. Is there some reason why we didn't adopt this to do the first and second readings and adopt it immediately?
Didn't consider it an emergency? We, we're just taking it during normal. Ordinance, two readings at two meetings and goes into effect thirty days later.
Okay, well, I would, I should have thought about that sooner.
So we, we declared this an emergency?
I'm asking why we didn't.
Okay.
All right, we have communications.
So we have next up, uh. Mister Lewis, gonna give a, an update on the McLaughlin Boulevard enhancements project update.
That was kind of redundant. Update on the update.
Well, shoot, I didn't.
I missed this one, Tony, so I'm not quite prepared for that.
You want us to bring it back?
Yeah, we'll bring it back.
Okay. That would be the only update that we have tonight.
Uh, since it's still on the agenda, um, I just wanted to say I read this, the staff report, and I was particularly. Interested in the open house results and, and comments. And it didn't look like there was, you know. Lot of strong. Opinions one way or the other, um. I thought that the comment section was, let me see what they call that, the comment section. Was a little bit telling. In terms of, um. They're just, they're, in, in a lot of ways, they just didn't seem like there was a really good alternative, um. To, to do this, and I kept thinking. Going back to the original purpose of this project, uh, to try to find. A way to walk along the McLaughlin Boulevard without taking your life in your hands. And I just, you know, none of the, in my opinion, some of the alternatives were just, were kind of even worse. So I guess part of what the question was, what are the most critical areas you believe the project should address? It was interesting that, you know. The darker color was avoid impacting traffic or freight flow equity and then re, avoid reducing parking. So those were, if you combine all those, there was, it was quite a bit, and then you had the safety, which was twenty percent. So I don't know. I'd, I'll be interested in, in having further discussion about this to just see, little, some contradictions.
Well, it is public feedback, so.
Yeah, no, no, it's, yeah, it's great.
That makes, that you're getting a diversity of opinions. I just, um. So I know we had a staff report, I just, um, and everything else that's going on today, I didn't get up. I, I didn't re-review this, um.
That's okay, you've been kind of busy. You've been kind of busy, John. All right, any commissioners comment, any commissioners things to report? I just have one. That I wanted to, I let Commissioner Smith know, but I am now the vice chair of the West Advisory Committee. And, uh, you know, be careful what you wish for, so. I would have loved to seen Greg Guy's face when they got nominated. Like, oh, my God, we don't want her. Uh, anyway, so, uh, is there any other further business before we adjourn? Do we wanna take a little bit of a break before we go to our executive session?
So when you did that vice chair thing, did you say, please, sir, may I have another?
What I said was, gee, you know, now that we have open officer positions. Is there anyone from one of the cities that would like to take a leadership role since we have not been represented in the past on this board? That's what I said.
Oh, goodness.
I'm just trying to stand up for the cities, you know?
And you do.
Trying to, trying to give us, get a toehold in there. I do not plan on being chair of it, let me tell you that, so.
Just remember what I read on the calendar, the tallest blade of grass gets cut down first.
I'll try to keep my head down, about that. Do we want a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we are. Adjourned. Until. I can't really see what time, okay.
Nine, nine fifteen.
Come back at nine fifteen.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Carrie.